It's so quiet in here. Waiting for Mr. Washington to come back. We have a conference going on up the center aisle, and I'm sorry we're late. We were having closed session and we went a little bit late. I'm waiting for the city manager to come back, and he's working his way back to the desk. All right, here we go. I'm calling this session to the Temecula City Council to order. Welcome. And I know we had prelude music, and thank you, so it's Serena Serpeski, correct? Stand up, please, and thank you.[84.36][84.36][applause] Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. And we are going to have our invocation this evening, Pastor Jim Diaz from Reliance Church. Pastor Diaz, here he comes. Good evening. And Mr. Washington, will you do us the honor of the flag salute this evening? So if everyone will stand for the invocation and remain standing for the flag salute, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can I just say one thing?
You may. And could we have the audio turned up in the house a little bit, because we can barely hear. Thank you, Mr. Hall.
I've lived in Temecula since 1967, and I'm just really blessed to see the city grow, but I'm also thankful for people like yourselves who watch over the city. So I'm honored to be here, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you so much for these ladies and gentlemen here, Lord. I thank you for just giving them the wisdom and the privilege to take care of the city. And we just pray your blessing on this evening. Father, we just want you to be the center of the conversations, Lord, that are taking place. We pray that you just be in every decision that has to be made. But again, I just pray for wisdom for all the leaders here in this city, and thank you for Temecula, and pray that you continue to bless it and continue to grow it. And we just thank you for this great city that you've made for us, Lord. And so bless this evening, we pray, and we thank you for it, and we pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're wondering why we're here tonight, ordinarily, we would have had a council meeting a week ago. That was Veterans Day. Do we have any veterans here tonight? Thank you for your service.[194.87][194.87][applause] We celebrated two holidays last week. We celebrated Veterans Day on Tuesday, and the honor of honoring our veterans. And on Saturday, we celebrated Puesca Mountain Day. Two years ago, our mountain here was freed from the scourge of a quarry. So we have much to be thankful for in this nation and in this city. So please join me by placing your right hand over your heart to say our Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. We are down in numbers this evening, so could we have the roll call, please? Councilmember Comertero is absent. Councilmember Nigar?
Good evening, Miss City Clerk.
Councilmember Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Washington?
I'm here.
Mayor Edwards?
Here.
Boy, the sound is really strange this evening. I'm not sure what's going on. Our -- maybe our -- maybe it's the -- maybe the Diaz mics aren't on. The speakers, yeah.
Mics are on.
It might be the --
Mics are on.
Mics are on, but maybe it's the speakers up here they're not on. Okay. We have some special presentation and proclamations this evening, so we always love to do Eagle Scouts, and I see some Eagle Scouts in the audience. So could we please have Ryan, is it Lebedev? Come up, please, and Jacob Simons. And this is -- Ryan is from Troop 384, and Jacob is from Troop 2011, 2011. And we've got Eagle Scouts. I'm going to bring them down there, so we can do them. My goodness, look at all the badges. I'm going to come down there. You are the other. Thank you, Jacob. Okay, so come here. So you can see, and we'll hold these up. There's Ryan. Okay. And there is Jacob. So as you can see, we congratulate you for your achievement on receiving the rank of Eagle Scout. We're proud to present you with this award, and we wish you success in your future accomplishments, each of you. And each of you will receive this specially created pin, and it's just for Eagle Scouts. It's a City of Temecula pin, and it's only presented to Eagle Scouts. It was made especially for that, and I think it is very cool. So, City of Temecula, community pride. And you know, I don't know that we've ever gotten a picture of this pin. I'm going to lay it down here for just a second. Let's see, let's see if we can actually get a picture of it. See if you can open it. It's okay if you want to bite it.
Takes an Eagle Scout to open it.
Takes an Eagle Scout to open it.
The microphone, too.
Can you get it?
Ah, nice. Move it down a little bit. There you go.
There you go.
As close as you can go?
Yep.
That's it? That's it. It is beautiful. All right. There you go. I'm going to shake your hand.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, I want you to step right up here, Ryan, and as I'm walking, I want you to tell us a little bit about the project that you worked on.
Um, for my project, I, uh...
And look right at Mr. Washington.
Hi. For my project, I built the memorial garden at the Grace Presbyterian Church in memory of Florence Lekowski, and it was a, like, a little sanctuary kind of thing. We put arvers and trees around it and shrubs for the people of the church.
Can you hear out in the audience? Yeah? Okay.
Yeah.
And what did you do for your project?
For my project? I built bird and bat houses and an owl house for the city of Lake Elsinore.
Oh, wonderful.
Yeah, and I would like to thank the City of Temecula for congratulating me, because Temecula helped me out a lot along the way.
Exactly. Can you elaborate on the outhouse for the city of Lake Elsinore?
No, it wasn't an outhouse. No. He said bird and bat and owl house.
Oh, okay, okay.
Not outhouse. See, we do definitely need to turn up that microphone, Jonathan. Yeah, definitely. You said bird, bat, and owl house. O-W-L house, not outhouse. Okay, so, sorry, City of Lake Elsinore. So, right? Yes. Thank you very much, gentlemen. We are very, very proud of you. So, thank you. And thank you, parents. We know you're proud, too.[554.25][554.25][applause] Parents, do you want to get any pictures? You can come up and get pictures, and you can have them stand up here if you want them to come up here and get a picture. That's easier. It's okay to pose. You want them to stand up here? Come up here, and then you can get the city seal up here. And you can stand right in front of me. I don't have to be in the picture, but stand right here, and that way the city seal is behind you. Here. How's that? Want me in it?
Yeah. Ryan, move over to the side a little. There you go. Right there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Parents, we know you're really, really proud. We're very proud of you, too, gentlemen.[602.52][602.52][applause] No outhouse. All right. Mr. Nigar. Okay, do we have any public comments?
We do, Madam Mayor. We have one speaker under Public Comments and two speakers under Consent Item Number Eight.
Okay, so let's move on to Public Comments, then. A total of 30 minutes is provided, so members of the public may address the City Council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the City Council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the City Council addressing Public Comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form must be filed with the city clerk prior to the City Council addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. Okay, could you call the first speaker, please?
Madam Mayor, our only speaker under Public Comments is Annette Brown.
Annette Brown. And Melody, good evening. How are you?
Good evening, Mayor Edwards and council members, and I'm really happy to be here at one of Councilmember Ron Roberts' last council meetings.
We don't like to talk about it.
I know. I told him we were going to miss him, and I know he's going to miss me, because I'm always bringing him crazy ideas. I know.
You're not going anywhere, and I'm not going anywhere.
Oh, you're going to stay right there. That's good. Thanks.
I'll be around.
We got it. Okay. We're here representing Visit Temecula Valley, and we're here to talk about our new program, Temecula Chilled. Visit Temecula Valley, along with its partners, the City of Temecula, Pachanga Resort and Casino, Promenade Temecula, Wine Country, and Old Town Temecula and the OTTA, are excited to launch Temecula Chilled this December. Our goal is to develop a branded experience over the next three to five years during the holiday season that will attract residents as well as thousands of tourists to our local businesses throughout Temecula Valley and to feed our economy during this time. This year, with the help of sponsors, we're also able to enhance and build upon some of the programs that we've already created or that you've created and things that exist. We're going to have more lighting, more decorations, we're going to have more activities, more fun. We are theming everything to the Temecula Chilled colors and ambiance, and we're going to be having some theme that is known as a luminaria. Everybody know what a luminaria is? Okay. We're going to be doing luminarias in Wine Country on December 10th, which is our shop night. We're calling it our shopping night, and that's also the night that they have the Taste of Old Town, the Holiday Taste of Old Town, which is a walking tour. And then we're also going to be doing a larger project on December 21st at the Sam Hicks Monument Park, where nonprofits are working and selling these luminarias, and then we'll be putting them out in honor of loved ones. So come out and see for yourself everything that there is to do and see in, from December 1st to the 31st. Don't forget, we're also going to have Snowbell Rockin' Nights right here at City Hall with our snow and light show. And visit our website. We have one just for this program called TemeculaChill.com. It'll give you a complete list of our activities. It also shows you what the businesses are doing to support us. And we're also still taking sponsorships, donations, volunteers, participants in the luminaria project. So there's plenty of things for you to do, and there is an opportunity absolutely for every nonprofit out there if they want to participate in our program. So please check with us and get back to us.
Thank you, Mel. Excellent. There's, it's going to be very exciting in December with Temecula's 25th anniversary. There's something every day, every single day. Lots of fun. Thank you. All right. So we can go on now to City Council Report. And Mr. Nigar, you beat Mr. Washington? No.
That's a rarity.
No.
Are you okay? Can you change?
You all right?
I couldn't get out of second gear.
Oh, okay.
I have a couple of things. First, someone sent this to me, and I was pleased to see it. The FBI released their 2013 crime statistics for violent crime and their top 10 safest cities in America, according to their crime statistics. So at number 10, we had Sunnyvale. Number nine, we had Glendale, California. Number eight, Amherst, New York. Number seven, Gilbert, Arizona. Number six, safest city in America, Temecula, California. That, uh, that's quite the honor. They went on, and they did some other statistics. Poverty rate is 7.6%, which is the 15th lowest in America. Percentage of adults with high school degrees, 92.3%, 48th highest. Then they went on. Number five was Frisco, Texas. Number four, Naperville, Illinois. Number three, Cary, North Carolina. And coming in at number two, we have to congratulate our neighbors to the north, was Murrieta, California.
Woo, woo, nice neighborhood.
So a special shout-out to our police force. First of all, glad to see Murrieta made number two. I think they deserve it. Their police department there works very hard. I will tell you, a lot of people take our police officers for granted, however, and the gravity of being number six is, we're a tourist destination, and we're actually a, just a destination city. People come to shop at our mall. They come to enjoy the Pachanga Casino, and they come to enjoy the Wine Country as well. So we tend to have our hands full, and at number six, I think that's quite the feat. And, uh...
That is really good.
Yes. The second thing, and probably a bit more meaningful, is about, maybe a little over a year and a half, early in 2013, I was honored to give, when I was then mayor, the Mayor's Medal of Courage and honor to a gentleman by the name of Tim Sweeney. Tim Sweeney was dying of liver cancer, but he chose to make his ordeal public and went on a crusade throughout all the regional cities to encourage organ donation, especially since he was living it and needing a liver transplant. Why he was in this state of dying with courage, he continued to be involved in community events and affairs, volunteering for the R. Nicholas Foundation. He was a very prolific comedian, not only holding shows here in our own community theater, but also being very connected as a Hollywood writer and a Hollywood consultant, also holding shows out in the Hollywood area. And he also made himself a mentor to many of the local leaders here in Temecula in this region. Mr. Sweeney died last week, and he died very well. He died in his sleep, and he died giving or deepening the faith of all of us, and he died with a lot of courage, and he died publicly. And I'm going to ask the council when we adjourn, that we adjourn in his name and honor him. There's going to be a service here. Hopefully, it might even be in these chambers, and we're trying to set that up. It's not a city affair that's being set up. I'm just helping them. And if you're interested in attending, I'm sure you'll hear about that. And that's it, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Nigar. Okay, and we said we had some people requesting to speak on consent calendar.
We do, Madam Mayor. We have two speakers under Item Number Eight. Matthew Fagan, to be followed by Larry Markham.
And Madam Mayor, I'm going to pull Item Number Eight.
All right, so we're pulling Item Number Eight. And you know what, then? Let me read this. "All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the City Council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action." Let me read them, and then we'll go ahead and take the speakers after that. "Number one, standard ordinance and resolution adoption procedure. Number two, approve the action minutes of October 28, 2014. Number three, list of demands. Number four, approve and file City Treasurers Report as of September 30, 2014. Number five, adopt the 2014 Conflict of Interest Code. Number six, approve a municipal bail schedule for violations to Chapter 12.08 Taxi Cabs of the Temecula Municipal Code. Number seven, approve the First Amendment to the Agreement with Environmental Science Associates for the preparation of a supplemental environmental impact report for the Temecula Valley Hospital-Hellport relocation. Number eight, direct staff to repair Amendment to Title 17 of the Municipal Code, providing for potential time extensions beyond those allowed currently for approved development plans at the request of Councilmember Nigar. Number nine, approve the Second Amendment to the Agreement for Consultant Services with Harrison Associates for French Valley Parkway Interchange Phase One, PW 07-04. Number 10, reject all bids for the Old Town Temecula Community Theater Remediation, PW 12-04. Number 11, accept improvements and notice of completion for the Murrieta Creek Bridge, Overland Drive Phase One Demolition, PW 13-03. Number 12, approve plans and specifications and solicitation of construction bids for Fire Station 73 Living Quarters Upgrade, PW 13-07. Number 13, approve the Third Amendment to the Agreement with ABM Building Services LLC for Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning Maintenance Services. Number 14, establish an all-way stop control at the intersection of Clubhouse Drive at Bay Hill Drive."
Move Consent.
So move Consent.
With the exception of pulling eight.
I'll take a second, please.
Second.
And I have a second. Please cast your votes. So that is four. Eyes with Mr. Comertero absent. Thank you, gentlemen.
And Madam Mayor, if it pleases, I'll go ahead and give the staff report for Number Eight, seeing how it was myself who put it on the agenda.
All right, then, let's go ahead and have, let's go ahead and have our comments. Well, one of them is for Number Eight, you said?
Both of them are for Number Eight.
Oh, both of them are for Number Eight. Okay, so then, let's go ahead and do that one first. Mr. Nigar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'll keep it brief. Whenever land is subdivided and we're looking at that project as a council, we're typically looking at track maps that are applicable to what's known as the Subdivision Map Act. And when a map is approved in accordance with the Subdivision Map Act, you're approved for a certain number, you're approved for a certain number of years. I believe it's three. And then you are able to come in and ask for three, or is it you're approved for three, and you're able to get two one-year extensions to those maps, correct, Mr.?
Actually, you're approved for two years, and then you can get three additional one-year extensions.
One-year extensions. I'm talking about track maps now, not plot plans.
With track maps, you can get up to five years.
Up to five years. And because of the recession, the Assembly and the state legislature, signed by the governor, saw the wisdom on four, maybe five, different occasions to legislatively lengthen that time, because what was occurring was track maps were being approved, let's say in the early 2000s, and then the recession hit, and you had track maps that were expiring, that were very good track maps, that would have expired without the opportunity to renew them, hence rending their entitlement void. That would have made the need for the developers to come back and renew those track maps, pay for all the consultant studies, everything that they did in the first place to get that approved. But the state legislator, legislature did not cover plot plans. A plot plan is that type of development which doesn't seek to subdivide land, but seeks to take a piece of property and improve it on its own merit, whether it's across one parcel or several parcels. Currently, and this is pretty uniform throughout Riverside, currently, a plot plan's good for two years, and you have three one-year extensions, and typically, you have to show that you did something the first two years, actively working on it. What's happening, however, is that due to the recession, it's very difficult to move plot plans or get things built after they were approved, and there's a propensity for them to expire. So I wanted to ask the council that they would direct staff to begin to craft, at council's direction and with council's input, an ordinance that would allow for the extension of plot plans, the rules of which we need to discuss. And that's my staff report.
I have a question. Will this, will granting these extensions have any impact on anything else? Will they change anything as far as, I don't know, will they have any impact on anything else?
That's probably something that we need to analyze when we develop the ordinance. Some of the things that we're looking at, mostly related to environmental, CEQA issues.
Right. That's what I'm thinking.
So as we formulate the ordinance, we will start developing what the implications could be, and also what type of parameters that we would measure a project against to be able to qualify them for an extension.
Because we could grant an extension, but something else could expire in the meantime. Is that possible?
Possibly, yes.
Yeah. Okay. That's the only question I had, Chuck.
Just to make sure I understand what the request is, Madam Mayor, it appears that Mr. Nigar is just asking us to give direction to staff to at least analyze the potential for this, and I don't know that there'd be any reason. I know we have a couple of speakers, but I don't know that there'd not be any reason that we wouldn't at least allow analysis of the proposal. That's not a question. Do you want it in the formal question?
No, I think I can put a question mark at the end of it and sort of interpret it as a question.
Okay.
But you'd be a terrible Jeopardy contestant. Okay. Mr. Roberts, are you okay? No questions? Okay. All right, then. Madam City Clerk, you may call Mr. Matthew Fagan.
Matthew Fagan, please, to be followed by Larry Markham.
You have to do this, you can only do this in the form of all questions.
What is why, Mayor Edwards?
Yes.
I watch that show a lot, so. Good evening, Mayor Edwards. City Council and city staff, my name's Matthew Fagan. I reside in Temecula. I appreciate this item being on the agenda on the consent calendar tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to it. I think Mr. Nigar, Councilmember Nigar, framed the situation very succinctly and very clearly. As a practical example, I was contacted by a client who had had a plot plan, or sorry, a development plan approved in the city back in 2009. He had a two-year approval and three one-year approvals, extensions, and as it turns out, today, November 18, 2014, his third extension expires. So he's got a project over, it's a medical building, a two-story medical building over by the, where Chipotle used to be, where I guess Fat Burger, Lazy Boy over there. This is, you get your, you know, use our Temecula landmarks, some of them. And, you know, he said, what are some opportunities? And again, I expressed what the ordinance, the development code said. And so I think this is a good idea. I don't think this is just a situation that's particular to Temecula. Again, because the state saw in their wisdom for tentative maps to extend those, I think that this is applicable to the city for development plans. Mr. Markham, I've chatted with him a little bit, and he'll speak in a couple moments, and he will talk to, perhaps, again, just the setting and how this makes sense. The codes really haven't changed in Temecula that much, and I think that will come through as part of the analysis. The general plan hasn't really been updated. Development code hasn't changed. Design guidelines, citywide design guidelines, really haven't changed, so there's a lot of merit to extending projects. When you do a project initially, it's tens of thousands of dollars. An extension, I think, is one to $2,000. So it's, it becomes a hardship on the developer to start, just really basically do it all over again, and I think there's more upside to the development community and also to the city to move ahead of this. So I'm in support of the council giving direction to staff to do this. I'd also like to offer my services if staff is looking for input from the development community, to provide some input into whatever analysis and whatever they come up with as a result of their homework.
Thank you, Matthew.
I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No. And you're perfect timing. Your yellow light just came on.
Okay. No questions? You don't want to frame?
No. No, that was a good, that was a good question, though.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Hi, Larry.
Larry Markham, 41635 Enterprise Circle, Temecula. Just to echo Matthew's comments, I appreciate this being put on agenda. This has been an ongoing issue with pretty much all the jurisdictions in Riverside County. The county will be moving forward to change their ordinance, to go to a different, probably more of a five-year lifespan without extensions of time. The other problem we have, if you have a plot plan or a conditional use permit or development plan in the city's target that's approved with a map, you have two different lifespans. And there have been numerous projects that developers have, unfortunately, thinking that both were the same lifespan, have had their development plan expire or their CUP expire while their map is still alive. And so consolidating this would be, I think, would be preferable. Also, it's, as has been stated, the biggest issue is typically getting Also, it's, as, as has been stated, the biggest issue is typically getting on development plans and, and conditional use permits is usually getting construction financing, which in today's world is far more difficult than it was several years ago, and that is usually the reason that most projects do die. We have already gone through the process of actually re, basically reapproving projects specifically to extend the lifespans, and we have several of those underway in, in the county and other jurisdictions. So I strongly encourage that, that this be moved forward by the council, and as Matthew said, happy to help with the, the process. And toward the question earlier, if there are changes, typically what happens to most extensions of time, there is an analysis by planning staff of determining whether or not there has been any changes in the development codes or anything, or even state regulations such as water quality management, that sort of thing. And usually it is a requirement of the extension of time that the, the applicant accepts those changes to remain consistent with the current development code at, at that time. So that, that is part of the analysis for extensions of time, so I can assure you that it does take place, so.
I wondered, otherwise it'd be a moot point.
Pardon?
I mean, I wondered, because otherwise you change one thing, it's a moot point if nothing else changes.
Yes, very true.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, just follow-up comment?
Sure.
Before it was questions, or before it was my staff report, now it's, now it's comments.
Right, no, it's fine.
Okay. I'll, I'll give the council a couple of examples, there, there are times when maybe we, we don't want to extend a plot plan, and there are times when maybe you do, and that's why we need to craft something that kind of works in, in both cases. If you recall when we were dealing with, let's say, the hospital issue, if you remember, it took years and years and years, and as long as they had their entitlement, which was a plot plan approval, it was keeping other hospitals from coming. And we got to the point to where that plot plan came up for renewal, and instead of extending it, we pretty much said, you either build it or we're letting it expire. That's a situation where we needed it to expire because it eventually ended up getting us a hospital, and that was a good thing. Mr. Markham, I believe, had a project that's over on, I think it was Maraga or Lindy Lane and, and Rancho California Road, where he got a senior care facility approved, or there was another one over on Pachanga Parkway and Loma Linda, I think it was, where there was a senior care facility approved. That was a plot plan. Finances didn't work out, that plot plan expired. We probably wouldn't have wanted that one to expire, we would have very much liked that to be built, but because the statute didn't allow it, there's just no opportunity to extend it. So I'm encouraging staff to find a way to work through those mechanics that, that either there's a, a set amount of time, the county's looking at five years, as Mr. Markham said, maybe we look at that, or maybe there's also that, and the mechanism to continue to renew it at council discretion, maybe it's five years, and then maybe there it's every year thereafter at council's discretion, something of that nature, whatever, however my colleagues want to weigh in. Mr. Markham also brought something else up that was very interesting. In the case of the senior care facility, they might have had a parcel map and a development plan.
Yeah.
The development plan would have expired, and their parcel map would have kept on going because of all these extensions through the state legislature, but they would have had a parcel map that's useful, useless to them. So it was kind of an anomaly. So, subject to comments from my other colleagues, I'm gonna move this item, but I'm also gonna add that staff seek input from the development community in the process.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, so go ahead and use your buttons. Let the record reflect, Mr. Washington is hitting his screen.
He's dead, you are.
Are you dead, Mr. Washington? All right.
You think I was being too rough?
Then, I think he was, there it goes, okay, so you didn't record a vote, you've beaten your machine there to death.
Off the desk.
This is off, it says you're.
It's not like being thrown out of the game.
It says you're off the desk, so let the record reflect, we have four ayes with Mayor Protem Comatero absent, and no nos, so thank you gentlemen, and I will entertain a motion on the remaining.
No, I think we did it already.
Consent?
Yes.
Do we, Madam City Clerk?
We did.
We're done with consent then, very good, then I will recess the city council meeting to the scheduled meetings of the Temecula Community Services District and all the other agencies, so, Mr. Washington, would you like to do the Temecula Community Services District?
Yes ma'am, I will, I don't have a gavel, but I.
I will loan you the gavel, the official gavel.
Oh, you are incredible.
Just don't break it.
To order the.
Pretty weak.
Temecula Community Services District meeting, in the absence of President Jeff Comatero, I'll run the meeting as the Vice President of Community Services.
And you are?
Chuck Washington.
And in the position of?
Vice President, Community Services District.
Thank you.
I just stated that.
No, I want you to say it again.
Oh, you can't hear still, huh?
What?
No, are you really Vice President?
I had to point that out to her.
Are you, oh, you are.
See, he didn't know either.
No, I thought, I thought the mayor was.
Well, we flipped for it, me or her.
Check first.
Yeah.
No, no, don't.
Madam, Madam City Clerk, please let the record reflect that all the directors are here with the exception of President Comatero, do we have requests to speak under public comment?
We do not.
Okay, I'll skip over the reading of the rules again since we've already heard them once, and the mayor did that so eloquently. Under consent calendar, all matters listed in consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted with one roll call vote, there will be no discussion of those items unless members of the Temecula Community Services District request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Are there any requests to pull any consent calendar items?
Uh, no.
Okay, item number 15 is approve the minutes of October 28th, 2014. Item 16 is approve a lease to own an installation and storage agreement with Decorite Inc. for Old Town Temecula Holiday Lighting and Decor. To have a motion to approve consent calendar. Have a motion by Mr. Roberts.
Second.
And second by the mayor, please register your votes.
Your button, Mr. Roberts.
What?
Push your button.
I'm just transfixed by the way you just do your meetings.
He's transfixed by Mr. Washington's meetings.
I'm stuck again.
His doesn't work.
Let's register a, a voice vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
There it goes, you're still.
I am not off the desk, stuck on it. I refuse not to be recognized. Can we have a director's report, please?
Yes, Mr. Vice President. We are in day eight of the 25 Days of Fun, which is part of Temecula's 25th anniversary celebration. A reminder, this Saturday is a 2.5 mile Silver Streak Fun Ride, beginning at 9 o'clock AM here in the Civic Center Town Square Park. So get creative for this fun ride and decorate your bike in silver. Also this Saturday, Michael, don't miss our Silver, Silver Anniversary Tea Party from 11 AM to 1 o'clock PM at the History Museum, Michael. Courtesy of the Old Town Spice and Tea Merchants, enjoying, enjoy sampling of delicious teas and light refreshments. And on Sunday, the 23rd, from 1 o'clock to 3 o'clock PM at the Civic Center Conference Center, is a Silver Star Rose Talk and Giveaway presented in conjunction with the Temecula Valley Rose Society. Meet other rose gardeners, listen to great presentations, and enter a drawing to win one of 25 Silver Star Rose bushes. For additional information, please visit the city's web page or call 951-694-6480. That concludes my report, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. No attention to the man under the desk. Can we have a general manager's report, please?
Nothing further tonight.
Comments from the directors?
Uh, no.
Motion to adjourn?
Uh, so moved.
Second?
Second.
Have a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We are adjourned.
I need my gavel back, thank you, all right. I will reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting, and going on to item number 17, receive a presentation by U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Riverside County Flood Control and Water Conservation District regarding Marietta Creek Flood Control, Environmental Restoration and Recreation Project Phase Two. Dusty, how are you? Long time no see.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council Members. Your screen's not gonna work, is it?
That's okay, I just can watch you and.
Yeah, but there's such.
I'm fully.
There, there is one picture you will need to see.
We're gonna bask in the shadow of flood control, thank you.
Oh, good evening. The Army Corps is here, and they have a presentation about the upcoming project, but I wanted to say just a few words as a lead-in. My name's Dusty Williams, I'm the Chief Engineer at Riverside County Flood Control District, and you're invited. What I came to do tonight was to invite you to a ground re-breaking, or a re-ground breaking. If you'll remember, it was a number of years ago that most of us gathered at the community center and initiated Phase One of Marietta Creek Project. It's been a long time since that happened, as evidenced by Mr. Niggar's trim build there, and, well, me too. Mike, I think you were 12 and I was 13, but.
Look how tall he looks.
And that was Councilman Stone, not Supervisor Stone.
Oh my gosh.
So that was November 12th, 19, or 2003, so it's been a long time in coming. We built Phase One, we finished that, and we've been trying to get money out of the federal government to complete the project ever since. Both cities, the Supervisor's Office, and our office have been doing that, and I must report with little success. There are a lot of needs in the country, and that money has gone elsewhere. But what we have done in the meantime is we have saved our pennies, and we have quite a few dollars in the bank that is to meet our local obligation. We don't have all the money that we would need to meet our total obligation, but we were able to work with the Corps of Engineers and Congress and forward our share prematurely in the term of about $17 million. What that's going to do is build Phase Two or most of Phase Two, and that's what the Corps is here to tell you about. But, given that it's been so long since we've, we've talked about it, I thought I'd remind you what we're talking about. That's what Phase One looks like, that's Marietta Creek, that's finished. But those of you that were here 20 years ago, this is what Marietta Creek can look like. And I think it's necessary every now and then to remind ourselves what Mother Nature can bring for us. And then we just have a little comic up here talking about the difference between optimists and pessimists. We haven't flooded in this town since 93, or, oh wait, that got changed, it's supposed to be 93. So are you an optimist, are we safe forever? And I think a lot of people are, but this council, and Marietta's council thinks we're due. And it was at your behest and the Marietta's, city council's behest, and Supervisor Stone that the Flood Control District and the Corps were told to get moving, let's get something in the ground as soon as possible, and that's why we're here today, to start that process. The invitation I mentioned at the beginning, that is for the groundbreaking on the 15th of December at the community center. There will be gold shovels for all. Council, uh, councilman, Congressman Calvert has put it on his schedule, General Toy from the Army Corps of Engineers, who was very instrumental in getting the project finally to us, he will be present, and numerous others. So I do invite you to that, and then I was just talking to Mr. Garcia before the meeting, the city is very aware of the impact along the, the neighbors to the project, mainly the commercial neighbors, and we have just, I'm gonna say penciled, not inked, Tom, but we, we've got a plan to hold a community meeting for those folks that are adjacent to the creek, to explain to them what the impact's gonna be, and that's tentatively scheduled for January 26th in the community room across the hall. So I hope you'll be able to join us at that as well.
Groundbreaking is December 15?
The groundbreaking is the 15th of December.
At what time?
Oh, I knew there were gonna be questions.
Oh, we'll pencil it in for him, Dusty, don't worry.
I believe it's 10 o'clock.
Okay.
But invitations went out late last week, so you should be getting something, but I, I'm sure Mr. Garcia or Amir know, I wish I did.
All right.
I know I'm gonna be here all day.
Dusty, we have it on our schedule for 10 o'clock.
That, I knew that's what it was.
He knew that, he just seen that we were paying attention.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, Mike.
Are, are, were you finished?
I, I'm gonna introduce Paul from the Corps next, so if you have any questions, it's me, please.
Well, I was just gonna ask if you were gonna explain what Phase Two included, but maybe you are.
That's what Mr. Underwood is here for.
Thank you.
I'm just here to show the nice pictures of you from a long time ago.
Don't jump ahead, Mr. Niggar.
I pledge.
Just a pretty face.
Don't jump ahead.
Now, that, that picture, I need to lose some weight, okay, that, that was, I have to tell you, that was, I had just gotten elected to my second term, I remember that, that was a couple of days after that.
It was, uh, it was interesting.
Yeah.
How the players have changed, but some haven't.
2003.
And I've been there forever.
Exactly.
You look like Gumby with a hat on.
Yes.
Nice and tall, thin.
With that, I would like to introduce Mr. Paul Underwood from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. I will stay if you do have questions afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Dusty. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, my name is Paul Underwood, I'm the project manager from the Corps of Engineers. I've been working on the Marietta Creek project for a little over two years now. Let me get this acclimated, this is the total project that was authorized back in 2000, and two years ago, we were here to kind of explain to you what our game plan was in coordination with the county as to how we could get Phase Two constructed. And the, the elements of that, the elements of that plan were, we needed to amend our project cooperation agreement that would allow the sponsor, Riverside County, to accelerate their provision of their share upfront in advance of the federal funds. Number two is, we're gonna use available funds to finalize the plans and specs for the Phase Two project, and the accelerated funds were gonna be used to award a base contract for the Phase Two, and that's what I have up on the screen here, is the base contract was going to, is going to occupy about a mile and a quarter, it's about half of the Phase Two distance. Option one and option two would be options of the contract that would be about three-quarters of a mile each. Then the, the next thing, part of our game plan was to do a, what we call a post-authorization change report, which would allow us to defer the Phase Four project.
Mm-hmm.
And make the project compete a lot better, get the BCR ratio a lot better, compete a lot better for federal funds. And then number four, just continue to seek funds, federal funds, to award the, the two options. So that was our plan, so last time we were talking about what we were gonna do, but now we're gonna talk about what we did, and so it took, it took a lot longer than we expected. But the, the, two of the big hurdles we had were, we had to get environmental clearance for the project, and there were a lot of agencies involved, environmental agencies, and everyone, we all had different viewpoints, and we were able to come up with some win-win compromises that eventually, after a lot of coordination, were able to, were able to get environmental clearance on July 29th, 2014, a very important day, it was a long time coming. Then the next big hurdle was the, was the, actually the amendment that allowed us to get the federal funds, that required about a nine-month process to get permission to do it, because this, this is the first one, one in our region, the first project in our region to use accelerated funds for a construction project. And so this was just, this precedent setting, we got permission, and then it took about another nine months to get the agreement itself hammered out and agreed to by all parties, and we executed that on the 19th of August, 2014. Then that moves us to where we're at now, we just advertised, we approved the plans and specs, we advertised this October 29th. So it's out there now, we're getting contractor inquiries, we're, we're working this right now. We really looked to open bids early December and award by, in mid-December. It's a little, it floats a little bit because you never know exactly when you can open bids because of the questions that come in. And we're, we're looking to issue a notice of proceed in, in January 2015.
Oh, great.
Contractor be on the ground, beginning to do things by the end of January. Now, just to give you just a, just a quick overview, this is, this is just a Google Earth image, but it just shows you where the, the base contract lays out in the real world. It starts, connects on to the Phase One project just downstream of First Street, and goes about 1,500 feet upstream of, of Rancho California, to give you kind of an idea, that's what we, that's what we intend to award in the December timeframe. Now this is just a blow-up of just the, the base, of just the, of the base contract, essentially it can be broken up in two pieces, the downstream end will be a soil cement, bank protection, it's a very steep bank protection, because the, it's, the real estate's so constrained through there, we need, we needed to get the flood capacity. the flood capacity. And then, like halfway between Main Street and Rancho California, we transitioned to a more standard riprap, laid-back slope, and allows, and we have a little more, we have more property to do that with. And it's a lot less expensive to build that kind of a... So, I wanna, what I wanna do is just kinda, just walk through, oh, what you're gonna see, right, right off the, the first thing you're gonna see when the contractor starts is a clearing grub operation. They gotta go through and clear everything in the base contract area. They will, uh, they have to have that done by March 15th so that we can avoid the environmental restrictions and be able to continue construction. Next thing you'll see is excavation effort, and the next, I think after that would be the riprap and the soil cement placement. I just want, very quickly, this is a general cross-section where we're using the soil cement on the downstream end. There's a little piece that says riparian corridor on there. That's where we're gonna be planting some trees, it'd be varial habitat. And also, there's a berm there, and that was part of our coordination with the environmental agencies, is that allows, it splits the flow and allows flows to remain under the trees, which gives amphibian habitat, which is something that they greatly desired. And it also gives us a slight increase in our flood conveyance capacity, because we were gonna have a bench there. So, it really, it really was gonna win-win type situation. The soil cement, just to give you a, just a little better picture of it, it is exactly what it says, you mix soil and cement. It seems pretty low-tech, but it acts a very, very hard protection. It's a very resilient type structure. It'll be 12 feet wide and built in lifts, about eight inches each. And it's, when you watch it being constructed, it's a lot more like a paving operation. Same kind of equipment, but when you, uh, when, when it dries, it's a very, very hard concrete-like structure. And that's what we're gonna be putting down, that second part, now through the downtown area. And then, when we transition to upstream, it'll be a riprap, 15-inch stone riprap up the, the bottom, like two-thirds of the bank, and which just protects the toe from unraveling with a lot of flows, with the high-velocity flows. And then, up, you'll see where it says turf reinforcement mat. We're using a, uh, plastic turf reinforcement mat product that's for erosion protection. You plant it, you hydroseed it, and then you use a lot of, we have a lot of plants going in there to lock it in, and it, it'll protect from erosion for the, for the lower velocity, deeper flows. So, it's, everywhere the, the rock isn't required, we're using that. And again, we'll be planting native materials in that area, which is part of our environmental compliance. The last slide, I just want, the way ahead, is as we go from here, once we award this, what we're intending to do is to gain the approval of that post-authorization change report. We've developed it, it's had a policy review, we're gonna, we're gonna try to send that up to, we're intend to send that up to our, our headquarters for approval on, in the month of January. And we anticipate, we, we, I guess we hope for an approval of that by the May timeframe, about the May 2015. Once that's approved, we will be able to compete better for federal funds, and we're gonna keep seeking federal funding to award the options, and also to initiate and complete the Phase Three design, which is the basin just upstream of the Phase Two.
Wow.
So, that's essentially where we're at right now, and what we're looking at. And just want to open it up, any questions?
Great. Mike?
Thank you, and thanks for your presentation. Did we, um, did we get a solution to the bike trail to go onto Rancho California Road? Are we gonna, is there any attempt to fix that? I know we have a trail that, that takes off on both sides.
Are you talking about where it was gonna go underneath the bridge?
Yeah, I think it needs to. Are we gonna be able to do that?
You know what? I'd have to verify with the designer on that. I'm not, I'm not certain.
Okay.
I just don't have that with me right now, but I can, I can get that answer back to you.
Would you think?
I will.
I know, we've been doing a lot with our bikes and Trails Master Plan, and that's kinda one of the biggies, is how do we cross Rancho California Road, particularly when you're, um, coming from the north to the south. It's, it's, it's very difficult, the way we've set up Diaz Road, and it's just very difficult. If you go out there...
I remember many discussions on that, I just don't remember what the final resolution was on that.
And how does, um, I mean, we're all praying for rain. Let's say our prayers are answered, and we get the deluge we're looking for, or at least the modicum of rain. Are you guys still able to keep on schedule?
Oh, you mean if, are you asking if it rains during construction?
Yeah.
Well, that's, you know, that's, uh, what the contractor will do is, they will cordon off half of the, half of the channel to convey flows and work on the opposite side. But of course, if we get a huge deluge, that's...
Right, okay.
That's something we'd have to accommodate for.
Got it.
So, we're not anticipating that, but it is in our contract to, for the contractor to anticipate those things. And if we needed to, if there was a huge storm through, a huge storm did come through, then we'd have to do a modification of the contract and handle that.
Thank you.
Chuck?
Relative to the question that Mike just asked about the continuation of the bike path, I think probably one of the challenges that we might wanna look at before we get too far down the road is we have a rather, uh, eh, not extensive, but a very nice path that runs along the west side of the creek.
Mm-hmm.
From Winchester all the way down to Ranch, California. And I think previous to this, Dusty, we've had discussions about some sort of a service road, actually, that would be on the other side of the creek, and maybe serve a dual purpose, much as what we've done with Santa Catrudas, where we have a bike path or road. But if they're on opposite sides of the creek, then we've kinda not made best use of the transitions from one to the other. So, if we can look at that early on, then we can avoid those very expensive and time-consuming changes. If we're gonna have to build something on one side or the other anyway, it might behoove us to look at how we... And I recognize that that also involves, at the other end, once we finally cobble together funding, that we want to continue that Santa Catrudas pathway beyond Inez right now, all the way down to the, to Myrietta Creek. We gotta somehow get to the other side of Myrietta Creek, or stay on this side, and so then we've got some challenges there. But all of these things can link together if we, I think, design it properly. Just need to know that going in upfront.
Okay, maybe we could get together and talk that through.
Sky hooks.
[laughing]
I know when we did Phase One, that we had to relocate a number of beavers. There were beavers in Phase One between, did you know that?
I did not know that.
Yeah, between the Santiago Bridge and the confluence of the two creeks down at, at the, have you surveyed Phase Two?
Surveyed it for beavers?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not aware of surveying it for beaver, but we are gonna do monitoring before we go out there.
Yeah, my, my office is pretty close.
Be a nice problem to have.
Yes, my, my office is pretty close down there, and we, we've seen them, not, of course, the water's pretty much gone now, but we see them in the spring.
Beavers?
Beavers.
We, there will be monitoring before we start the clearing grubbing, so if we need to relocate things, we can.
Yeah, yeah, there are beavers down there. And I don't know, because it depends on how much water's there now, but they had to relocate a lot of them. They come up from the south.
We'll keep our eyes open as we get down there.
Yeah. And just, just to make it clear so that people don't think, any, anytime there's cement going up the, the banks, it's covered, so it does not look like the LA River in any way, shape, or form. I just wanna make that clear, because...
There actually, there is no cement going up the banks.
Right.
But we, the riprap that we do put in will be covered with the soil cover.
Right. I knew that, but anytime people hear, when they hear you say concrete or riprap, or any, yeah, riprap, yeah.
Not riprap.
We just wanna make sure that it's gonna look all natural, be planted, and it, and it looks beautiful. Did you know about the beavers, Dusty?
Paul doesn't have that, the history that we have going way back.
Yeah.
But thi, this channel is the way that the citizens want it. It was that concrete LA River at the first inception back in the 90s. The, the soil cement that the Corps is putting in, it's not going to be natural-looking, but it's gonna be more natural than the LA River. It's a very rough concrete. It's stair-stepped and rough and rugged. Plants do get a foothold and grow in it, but it's not going to look vegetated, by and large, but it's going to look more rugged than slick concrete. The, the point here is, because of the location of the existing structures...
It's through Old Town, right, where it's so narrow and steep?
About, just about half a mile.
Yeah.
We couldn't, the only way to get all the water through there and keep the flatter side slopes was to tear out buildings. That wasn't acceptable to anyone. So, the compromise was that it would be steep. I keep saying concrete, and that sends the wrong word, but soil cement is a different product. But there, it will be a more structural look to it downtown.
It's dark, dark colored?
It actually takes, it takes on the, it takes on some of the color of the earth that was used.
They actually mix the dirt that's there with cement. They mix it in place. It's not an imported product. But, you're, you're, I'm not gonna tell you it's gonna look natural, but it's gonna look better than the LA River, and it's going to convey water much better than it does now, which is really, ultimate plan is that, that we don't want anybody flooding in the downtown area. But it's so narrow in there that the Citizens Committee way back was willing to give up this, this .6 mile. But as Paul said, we have a repairing strip that's all, varies between 100 and 150 feet wide, the whole seven miles of the channel. Here, it's gonna be very narrow, though, but there still will be trees and repairing strip that will buffer some of that look to it.
Well, if we wanted to, could we plant something at the top that would hang over?
As long as it doesn't impede the flow.
Okay.
And in, and in answer to Mr. Washington's question, too, there are trails on both sides, they do function as maintenance access, but equestrian will be on one side and bicycle pedestrian on the other side, and it'll be contiguous the whole seven miles on either side. Exactly how that works with the, with the pieces there, I know what you're talking about.
Right.
There are places where it won't work and will have to be taken out, but we're very conscious of what the city has done. I think the city's done a good job showing the, the citizens what can be done, what can be expected. This is not gonna be the LA River, it's not gonna have concrete side slopes, it's not gonna have chain-link fences, and it's not gonna have graffiti on it. So, it will look not natural, it's gonna be a straight line, but it will look pleasing, I believe. I believe you will find the businesses downtown actually turning some of their businesses around, or maybe even constructing porches or dining areas on the backside, and, but it's not gonna have water in it all the time, either. Beavers are not...
If we leave the beavers there...
Yeah, I know.
Maybe we could have the river walk.
You don't, yeah, but they have water, too, that's...
Right. Have you, I mean, did you know about the beavers in Phase One?
Oh, I remember the beavers. They're up in Lake Skinner right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that was quite a conference. But remember, at that time, there was the, the discharge, the constant discharge from the water treatment plant, and there was more water, and they, they did build those dams in there, and actually, they had quite a beaver dam.
Well, we had, we had a lot of them this spring.
Yeah.
They come back every spring.
I did not hear that.
You gotta complete the story, though. You're right, they were moved to Lake Skinner, and then they started eating all the trees at Lake Skinner. And they eventually got moved out of state. It was a big, uh, it was a big deal. Some, I think there was five, two went to Tennessee, three went to Texas. I'm not kidding.
And you know what they said?
Okay, I'm not kidding.
They said, "We don't lack the south," and then they all came back.
Oh, they keep in touch, Mr. Washington.
First thing that will happen, and I must warn the council, too, we're, we're going to catch a lot of flak for some of this, because this is big-time construction. These are big yellow machines, and they make noise, and they make dirt, and we're gonna hear about it. But it's nothing compared to the screams we heard when the rain...
Nothing compared to 1993.
The first thing that, exactly. The first thing that will happen will be clearing grub, and we have to remove all the vegetation. One, to make construction feasible, but two, during the winter months, nesting is not happening. We need to remove that vegetation prior to March 15th, so the, the animals don't move back into that and slow down construction.
Are we looking, what is the leasebill vario? Is that what we're looking for?
Among other things.
Is that, is that the 15th? Is that what the...
That's, that's the, that's the main thing.
That's the main thing, is the little gray bird. We need to make sure that they don't get in there and form nests, 'cause then that should shut down construction.
Okay.
So, our real goal here is March 15th. That is a, a hard deadline. We have to have all the vegetation removed at that time.
Okay.
So, it's gonna be ugly for a while. Think to the future.
Yeah, we do.
Think how nice it'll look when it's over.
We do.
Think of Phase One. It was ugly while it was being built.
It was.
Madam Mayor.
Okay, got it?
Just before you guys leave, Dusty, kudos to you and the Army Corps and to your staff. It's a long time coming.
Gosh, yes.
Boy, meetings and meetings and meetings. I know Councilmember Washington and I serve on our local, uh, the city's representative to that, but before that, it was another, there was a...
I started up the second round of meetings back in, yeah, 2005.
Goes back a long way, but, so...
See, I represented Myrietta.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I've been in front of you many times.
Long time.
Long time.
So, this is, this is receiving file, right?
And the last thing, I'd be remiss if I did not publicly thank Congressman Calvert.